We are a go, uh, put it rolling.
Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order, could we all rise for the President of Elegions? My President of Elegions, unified.
United States of America, and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, one tribe.
Elegions, you call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Metzich?
Yep.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yep.
Trustee Cussera?
Yep.
Trustee Lotner?
Yep.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
And President DiCipio?
Yep.
Our quorum is present, Mr. President.
Thank you, Amanda. Uh, first, before we go to public, uh, participation, I just want to introduce Tim Alvarez, who's come and joined us. Tim is on the agenda in my report for commission appointment, and I asked him if he would like to, to join the meeting tonight. And Tim, it's not till the end of my report, which is at the end of the meeting, but we have public comment now, if you'd like to address the board or introduce yourself and say anything, but hey, it's all yours.
Well, thank you. I, I'm very honored to be here tonight. Um, I'm honored for the nomination here. Um, I've lived in LaGrange Park now for 12 years. I have three beautiful daughters and a wonderful wife. We live here on, uh, on Sherwood, been big fans of this community. Um, truly, I moved here about four blocks from Brookfield, and it is a world apart in terms of the community, the, uh, service to each other, and honestly, I'm just, uh, I'm a big fan of LaGrange Park, and I'm, I'm honored to be a part of this, this council.
Thank you, Tim, for, I mean, we've all, in my report, we'll do the committee and commissions appointments, and Tim is, uh, up for nomination into the police commission, so, thank you, Tim. Um, thank you for stepping forward, and we look forward to working with you down the road.
And I as well. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on from the public that would care to make a comment at this time? Okay, moving on to consent agenda, Amanda, Megan, I'm sorry, Megan?
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. President. The items on this evening's consent agenda are as follows. A, approval of minutes: one, village board meeting, April 28th, 2020; two, village board work session, May 12th, 2020; and three, executive session meeting, May 12th, 2020. B, action authorization to destroy executive session recordings, motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the destruction of certain verbatim records of closed meetings. C, action, motion to authorize the president and chairperson of the finance committee to sign the register for bills and authorize the treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in payment of operating bills and salaries as itemized in the check registers. And D, action, motion to authorize the village treasurer and village clerk to sign checks in the payment of payroll and other bills that become due between this date and the next village board meeting with subsequent approval of the payroll register and voucher register by the Board of Trustees at its next meeting.
Thank you, Megan. Motion to approve, uh, the report as presented. Can we?
Second.
Motion is second. Megan, calling the roll?
Trustee Metzich?
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan?
Yes.
Trustee Cussera?
Yes.
Trustee Lotner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
And Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Next on the agenda, village manager's report, Julia?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I have just one item to report on this evening, and that is regarding the recent heavy rain event that occurred on May 17th. Uh, we received, uh, quite a bit of rainfall on that evening, which resulted in, uh, both overland and street flooding and impacting many homeowners in town. Uh, so, uh, we had staff out there, uh, responding, um, as the rain was falling, as the streets were flooding. We also had, um, a number of staff responding to calls coming in throughout the week and, and, and continued to do so. Uh, so, consistent with past practice, uh, we talked with the village engineer, Rick and I did, uh, Rick being the public works director, talked with Mark Volk, the village engineer with Hancock Engineering, and Mark prepared a report about the observations of this rain event and some of the puzzle factors and impacts as well. And so, I would like to, if I, if I could, Mr. President, turn it over to Mark Volk, provide a brief overview of that particular rain event, and also Director Reddy is prepared to augment with any observations and reports that, uh, he has to provide as well. We can take any questions from the board as well. From there, I will give Mark.
Okay, thank you, Julia. Um, yeah, I'll just, uh, if you had a chance to review the memo, I'll just, uh, briefly go through it. Um, as we all know, the village, um, experienced flooding, uh, basically Sunday afternoon, Sunday evening on May 17th, yards, basements, and, um, streets. Um, and it seemed, uh, Rick had called me about 7:45. It seemed to be holding its own, uh, early in the evening, but, um, at about 7:30 or so, there all of a sudden seemed to be a lot of water in the streets. So, I, I called the MWRD. Um, I was able to get through. The person who answered the phone, um, he, he assured me that the deep tunnel connections were not closed. They did not close them, but, uh, he did not know the actual status, um, of levels in the, in the, in the tunnels or the reservoir. Um, but they were probably almost full at this time. Um, a little background, though, on, on the, on the storm. Every, every storm is unique. It's got its own signature. Um, we, this is the wettest May on record for the Chicago area, you may have heard. And, um, preceding the weekend, we did have a rain event on Thursday and Friday, the 14th and 15th. Uh, we got about 1.6 inches of rain, um, which is not insubstantial. It kind of saturated the ground. Um, and then, of course, on Saturday and Sunday, we had the big event. And, um, if you look at the, um, the graph in the report, uh, towards the end of the event, if you see the line goes vertical, that indicates a very high intensity in a short period of time. And, um, a lot of storms, and like I said, each storm is different. Sometimes this high intensity is at the beginning. Sometimes it never happens at all. But in this case, the fact that it happened at the end of all this rain, uh, was kind of a worst-case scenario. Uh, the ground was saturated. The sewers were already surcharged. Uh, the creek was rising. Basically, there was nowhere, uh, for the water to go. Um, the, the pipes just did not have that conveyance for that brief burst of intensity over about an hour of rain. So, um, and then I, I also included a graph of the level of Salt Creek. And again, it peaked, you know, very late Sunday, early Monday morning. Um, the storms seemed to indicate, to, um, flood a lot of areas of town, who normally don't. Um, a lot of reasons for that. Again, the, the sewers, these are older sewers generally, maybe only 12-inch diameter from the laterals, and they just can't handle that intense of a storm. So, it's, it's really, it's not unexpected for an event like this, unfortunately. And then, of course, the rear yards, which have no drainage outlet at all, they just act as a, as a basin or tub, and the water just, uh, sits there until, uh, it has a chance to, to percolate into the ground. Um, we did do a feasibility study back in 2016 to help come up with ideas on how to alleviate, uh, some of these problems, especially in the southeast section of town, uh, Barnesdale, Monroe. It's really the lowest area of town. And, um, we've come up with, uh, a plan, a phased plan, that would incorporate underground storage and pumps and, uh, gravity flow to Salt Creek, uh, to the north, you know, eventually, uh, when funding becomes available. So, uh, the main thing, you know, you know, residents need to, to keep their, um, service lines clear. I know the village recently completed a downspout, um, program, which I'm, I'm sure helped, but when you have localized flooding, especially near homes, it comes in through window wells, it comes in through, uh, basement doors, foundation cracks. And, um, really, it's a many-faceted, uh, reasons for, for all this flooding. So, yeah, if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Hey, do you have any questions for Mark?
Uh, thank you. I don't really have a question for Mark, but in general, for, um, Rick and, uh, Julia, um, do we have an idea as to how many residents, percentage-wise, were affected, at least of those that contacted the village, with some sort of a flooding event in their basement or indoor backyard?
Yeah, Bob, uh, you know, through the, through the next few days after that storm, you know, we took quite a bit of phone calls. I mean, I think I was averaging about 30 a day for the first couple of days. Um, and they were all different. You know, there was some that were backyard flooding complaints. There were some that were seepage complaints. Uh, there were some that, you know, all the way to three to four feet of water in their basement. So, it was pretty staggering on the amount of calls and what the calls were really doing. Um, so, yeah, it, and they still keep coming to this day. You know, we had a couple today that we had to take. Um, we're going to be meeting some people, uh, later this week about the exterior or the interiors of the homes. I know Dean and Patrick are working on a lot more of the exterior, uh, overland flooding issues, but they're still going to keep coming in, Bob. I think a lot of people are just unsure what to do, and, uh, I think they're trying to work through insurance, and I think there's a lot of insurance companies that may be denying claims, so now they're coming to us after the fact. So, again, I would anticipate that we're going to keep continuing getting even more calls for the next few weeks.
Any, any thoughts on, I mean, not that it's, it's precise by any stretch of the imagination, but 10% of the village, of the, of the residents, 20%, um, I mean, they're continuing to come in, but just, uh, an unofficial is fine. Your thoughts?
I mean, just, just with the amount that I took in, I mean, I think it's a smaller percentage out of how, how many people, but, I mean, maybe 10%. Uh, Julia, do you think that's a pretty good guess at this point? I mean, it's, it's a hard to say.
It's hard to know because a lot of people don't contact the village, um, because they have encountered this before. That's kind of a part of the bigger conversation that Rick and I had today. Um, is there likely a lot of homes that, uh, for whatever reason, they did not make contact with the village? But I think, uh, around 60 homes were impacted in some form or fashion. Um, certainly there are areas that I saw that experienced, you know, substantial, um, street flooding, um, at certain, uh, intersections. I didn't see calls from that particular area. We also, um, don't have the data from the gar- uh, garbage pickup just yet, so that will be an additional factor in trying to understand the impact of homes. Um, and certainly, um, staff, uh, did, um, go through the village on garbage pickup day to try and understand where some of those hotspots were. Um, but in terms of a solid percentage, we don't have that at that time. We continue to collect information and try and understand the impact. Uh, um, I would say the last time that we had a significant rain, uh, like this one, was in 2011. We had about 50 homes impacted at that time. I would say we probably had more than that. Um, I think that's 53 homes that were impacted. Insofar that there was outreach that was conducted to the village, I would say that there's probably 10 to 20 more than that. Um, and as more information comes together and we continue to get phone calls, we just got two last night, um, that folks that we had not heard from. So, the information continues to come in, and we'll continue to collect it and aggregate.
Okay. Thanks. That's all I'm looking for at this point, just an approximation, and it's a little bit more than the, the last time. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Lotner. I think it's important to note, too, Julie and I were involved in a conference call, uh, last Wednesday at the Proviso Township Mayors, and this is, this is throughout our, our district, our region. I mean, everybody is flooding, everybody's getting impacted. It makes me look at what this board and previous boards in our administration, Julia and her staff have done. Imagine if we didn't have the flood mitigation program in control. Imagine if we didn't do the dump, uh, downspout disconnect program. Imagine if we, we didn't recommend in our, in our rose clippings of what, uh, residents can do to control flooding. I mean, just think what would happen if all those programs were in place, and the board wasn't diligent enough. Um, Rick and your staff, Rick, you guys did a great job. I want to thank you and everyone else involved in this episode, uh, Sunday and Monday, because, uh, you know, like you guys are, who's had flooding in their basement, but trying to get up, rip carpets, wet carpets up out to the parkway. Um, nobody's happy doing that, so thank you for all your efforts, you guys.
Mr. President, I didn't know if Rick wanted to add or augment anything that, um, Mark did provide in his report. He had made, um, I don't know if there were a, any additional observations, Rick, that you wanted to make from that particular evening?
Well, I mean, again, um, you, you know, when the, when the, when this all began, you know, um, I was a little bit more concerned about the creek flooding, uh, like I indicated in the, uh, weekly updates. Um, so I was talking to John Janik, my foreman. He was in town. He was checking out all the hotspots. I even, uh, I talked to Chief Magus. Um, you know, he was out and about. He was, uh, pretty much reiterated the same thing. At the, at a certain point in time, I mean, about 6 o'clock, 5:30, 6 o'clock, or somewhere around there, you know, we were holding our own. We were doing real well. Um, and then we just had that massive, uh, burst of rain that came down in a short period of time, and, you know, I, I, I wish I had my rain gauge up because I, I just think that we had a, a significant more than what people are saying, whether it was that old era of Midway, um, that I, I think we were probably close to a two-inch, uh, two-inch rain event. And when you just already have sewers that are full, fully at capacity, uh, you had the MWRD, they were rolling. They had the deep tunnel rolling. They had the, the reservoirs all going. Everything was doing what it was supposed to do, but we had just such that quick downspur, like down so much rain in a short period of time. You know, even if you had two foot sewers in the ground, I don't think that would have really helped. You know, with just that much, you know, there just was no room for capacity. That's why I think I experienced personally some street flooding that I haven't seen in a while. Um, even in some of our separated areas, we had some issues, and I, a lot of that had to deal with the creek was already at, you know, a high level as it was. It was only about a foot from being at a, a near-record, uh, high, um, in 2013. Uh, so, with the, with the creek being high, and you had separated sewer areas that, you know, should have been flowing to the creek, and those were holding water, you know, anytime you get something like that, I mean, and you know it's a, a significant event, and there, like, again, you know, we couldn't even, it was very hard for us to drive down some of the roadways. We had to go out with our big salt trucks to go down the roads, because even small pickup trucks couldn't make it. You know, I could not make it to the intersection of Homestead and Monroe. I could not make it to the intersection of Barnesdale and Monroe without my truck ride flooding, so I had to back out of those areas. Those are pretty substantial, uh, flooding, you know, streets that we had. There is probably two feet of water in those intersections. Um, again, you know, just a major amount of rain in a very short period of time with a sewer system that was already at capacity before that last burst came down. Uh, very unique storm, uh, that I would miss myself.
Thank you, Rick.
And one thing I would add to that is, um, from the observations of what we saw out in the field, um, w- we believe that, you know, that portion of the village that is separate and the water is redirected to Salt Creek, the storm water, um, we believe we've observed some slowing of that conveyance, which, um, is just indicative of just how full Salt Creek was. So, the pressure of the flow of Salt Creek was so strong as compared to the flow from the separated portions of the system to go north towards the creek that inhibited that. So, that was something different that, uh, we have seen from the past. So, it just goes to show that, uh, when Salt Peak is, uh, beyond capacity, near-record levels, it does make all the difference in the world. So, that, that is one of the observations that we have, and I just wanted to make sure that folks, uh, knew that that observation had been made.
Okay, anything else, Julia, is that, is that it?
Unless if there's any other questions, that is my report.
Any trustees have any other just questions? Okay.
Yes, Dr. DiCipio, Mr. President.
Yes.
Quick question, and maybe we can take this offline, because it, uh, definitely impacted me and may impact other people in our area in the village. And I think Julia mentioned insurance. Um, I live in Sherwood Village area. We have overhead sewers, and, uh, it was mentioned that there was a lot of, uh, flooding coming into window wells. Um, I experienced that, and, um, my insurance company said they do not cover that. Is there any avenue I can go to through either the village or the company's organization? And like I said, if it's something we should take offline tomorrow, I would definitely do that. Because they won't let cover.
Yeah, I can.
And I'm going through, uh, I'm going through, um, remediation right now, uh, for, um, and it's quite expensive.
Yeah, uh, I can, I can address that as best as I can, Mr. or, or, um, Mr. President. Um, certainly the overland flow, because the, the depth of the overland flow, I, uh, did, uh, have the ability to reach not just window wells, um, but stairwells and other, um, access points to the property. Uh, that is something that we have, um, seen in talking with the residents in town. Um, I would recommend, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure why insurance doesn't, uh, uh, cover certain levels of coverage. I think what we're hearing is that there are sometimes specific exclusions and sometimes riders, and it really, um, insurance can be as different as, as people can be in terms of, um, provisioned coverage of policies. And, you know, we recommend that people take a close look at policies. That's just a very practical thing that has come about our, our conversations with residents. But, uh, we are not aware of any other, any available funding, um, to come by way of this particular rain event. I know that a number, um, President DiCipio had mentioned that, um, the Proviso mayors have been in discussion about this particular rain event and the impact to the general region. And I can tell you that there have been some discussion amongst those areas on those calls about, um, at, at exactly what level, um, the, uh, i- i- the, the impacts and the cost and the loss gets to a level where a declaration may be declared. So, I know that there are a number of municipalities, including ours, that are watching to see what the county is going to do in terms of a declaration. I know, uh, Dean can attest to this, that we've been out this road before in terms of a declaration. Even when it's called, the total amount of the loss has to reach, um, levels like $17 million in order for FEMA to step in and provide assistance. Um, and early indications are at this time that, um, there's no intent to declare a disaster for this area, but that could change. Lots of things can change, basically. But with regard to the information that we have received this morning, um, there is no indication that a declaration will be filed for this particular area. Um, and my guess is because they have some inkling that total aggregate cost of the loss will not get to that, um, threshold level to which FEMA will provide a program for this area for those losses. We've, I, since I've been... Yeah, since I've been at the village, we've never reached the threshold.
Right. Yeah. And like I said, we've just been trying to talk to the insurance agency, and, you know, if, if the water comes up through the sewer, we're covered. If it, we, overhead sewers, uh, comes through a window wall, we're not. So, maybe that's a little bit personal or self-serving, but hopefully it helps other people in the village. Thank you very much.
Wow, wow. Good information. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cussera. Okay, Julia, this, move it down to Administration Committee. Trustee Seidel?
My first item is the Administration Report, COVID-19 Information. The Village of LaGrange Park is monitoring the coronavirus COVID-19 situation very closely in an effort to support the agencies charged with managing the outbreak and provide timely updates to residents via our website or email newsletter and Facebook. The village's website has a variety of resources available to assist residents, including information on dining options, meal delivery, emergency childcare, um, mall business, resources, volunteer opportunities, and more. Have a question? Village staff is always available to assist residents. Call Village Hall at 708-354-0225. The next item is vehicle stickers. Due dates extended. Due to COVID-19, village vehicle stickers and dog tags' due dates have been extended to October 31st, 2020. Stickers with the July 31st, 2020 expiration date are valid until October 31st, 2020. Questions regarding the deadline extension may be directed to Village Hall at 708-354-0225. The next item is It's Not Too Late. There is still time to be counted. LaGrange Park has the third highest response rate to the 2020 census in Proviso Township, just behind Western Springs and Westchester. If your household is one of the 24% that has not yet responded, there is still time. In early April, every home should have received an invitation to participate in the 2020 census. Responses for each household can be made in one of three ways: online, by phone, or by mail. Learn more about Census 2020 and complete your census online at www.census2020.org. My next item is Village Board Agenda Memo Regarding Suspension of Block Parties, Garage Sales, Plant Shows Due to COVID-19. The general background: The current stay-at-home order issued by Governor Pritzker expires on May 30th. In order to comply with the stay-at-home order and social distancing requirements, on April 24th, the village board suspended all garage, yard sales, block parties, craft and plant shows, and sidewalk sales. Herb side pickup is allowed through May 30th. On May 6th, Governor Pritzker released the Restore Illinois Plan outlining a four-region, five-phase, health-based approach to the reopening of Illinois. Based on comments from the governor's office, it is anticipated all regions of Illinois will transition to Phase 3 on May 29th. While the Phase 3 regulations allow for the opening of additional businesses, with restrictions gathering remains limited to 10 people. In order to adhere to the anticipated regulations for Phase 3 under the Restore Illinois Plan and in the interest of protecting the public health and safety of LaGrange Park residents, it is recommended that the village extend the suspension of activities that encourage to people to congregate behind the initial May 30th deadline. These activities include block parties, house, apartment, garage, and yard sales, art, craft shows, and plant shows, indoor, outdoor, and sidewalk sales. Currently, the Illinois Municipal League is advising municipalities to postpone or cancel all community events and large gatherings through the end of the summer. The Restore Illinois Plan doesn't permit large gatherings of up to 20 people until Phase 4 and still requires social distancing during this phase. If the timing of the transition from Phase 3 to Phase 4 is currently unknown, staff recommends extending the suspension of the above activities through June 30th and reevaluating the suspension on a monthly basis going forward. This item is for discussion and action. Staff recommends approval of this motion. And at this time, I make a motion to suspend block parties, house, apartment, garage, and yard sales, art and craft shows, and plant shows, indoor or outdoor, and sidewalk sales through June 30th, 2020.
We have a motion of second discussion. Trustee Seidel?
Um, we discussed this before. I am in complete agreement. Um, you know, always err on the side of safety, so I am for approving this item.
Thank you, Trustee Seidel. Trustee Sheehan?
I supported it both, sir.
Trustee Cussera?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Well, thank you, Mr. President, I am also supportive of it. Um, it's a situation where we have a lot of people touching merchandise on, on, oh, villa, uncontrolled environment, uh, so I am in total, uh, agreement and, uh, you know, we open up the end of June, we've still got, uh, half the summer to go, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Zora.
Thank you, Mr. President, I feel like it's a responsible thing to do and I'm in support of this.
Thank you, Trustee Lotner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, um, as much as I'd like to see us moving forward as quickly as possible, I think the wise thing to do and I would support the motion.
Trustee Metic.
Uh, I concur with my fellow trustees, uh, I would like to see things moving forward, but we don't know where we're at yet and this just makes it safe.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Megan Call the Row.
Trustee Metic.
Yes.
Trustee Sheehan.
Yes.
Trustee Casera.
Yes.
Trustee Lotner.
Yes.
Trustee Zora.
Yes.
Trustee Seidel.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. Anything else?
And that concludes the admini- that concludes Administration Report.
And thank you. Moving on, Building and Zoning Committee, Trustee Zora.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to report the Building Department activities for April of twenty twenty. Seventy building permits were issued in April compared to seventy-nine last April. There have been a hundred and seventy-six permits this year so far. Estimated construction costs for the month were nine hundred eighty-seven million dollars, which is close to the same as last year, I'm sorry, nine hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars, which is close to the same as last year. Twenty-three inspections were conducted in April compared to one hundred and eight last April. Two were not approved. There have been three hundred and twelve inspections conducted so far this year, three hundred and five during the same period last year. Adjustments were made during April related to scheduling. Allison and Patrick work from home, half days, alternating schedules to limit personal contact. A permit was issued for the new dental office at ten eighteen thirty-first Street. A portion of the sanitary sewer located in the public sidewalk was replaced and inspected. Various inspections were completed for Rosati's Pizza during April and now it's open. The stone and weed area next to Phillips Flowers where the Pancake House formerly existed was paved to make room for the new clovers, which is also open now. A permit was issued for Bethlehem Woods to replace an interior chiller and exterior cooling tower. The building on surround all sides of the exterior cooling tower, so screening is not an issue. And Western Dental obtained a permit for a minor remodel of several office rooms. And that is it for my report, I have one item that's up for action and discussion. The state of Illinois has been under Governor Pritzker's stay-at-home order since March twenty first, twenty twenty due to COVID-19. On May sixth, twenty twenty, Governor Pritzker announced the Restore Illinois Plan of four-region, five-phase, public health-based plan to reopen the Illinois economy. Governor Pritzker recently announced that the state of Illinois will transition to Phase Three of the Restore Illinois Plan on the eighth twenty ninth, which has been modified to allow restaurants to engage in outdoor dining subject to Illinois Department of Public Health regulations. In LaGrange Park, four of our seven restaurants currently have varying degrees of outdoor dining available. Panera, Bill's Place, Matone, and Posto Thirty-One. Our other restaurants, Subway, Rosati's, Golden Lock, and eventually Eno's currently have no outdoor dining. Indoor dining is not permitted for Phase Three and outdoor dining is restricted to fifty percent of normal capacity and subject to social distancing requirements. As a result, LaGrange Park dining will be severely limited, if not entirely prohibited, in engaging in outdoor dining. Under the LaGrange Park Municipal Code, certain temporary uses are permitted, subject to staff approval and other temporary uses require village board approval. Due to the need to respond quickly and support our local businesses, staff recommends the village allow for temporary outdoor dining at all restaurants subject to a temporary use permit approved by administrative level. This would allow restaurants with existing outdoor dining to potentially expand their outdoor dining area and those restaurants who currently don't have outdoor dining available the opportunity to offer this experience. The Illinois Department of Public Health will be releasing regulations pertaining to outdoor dining in Phase Three. Additionally, the village's risk management provider, Irma, has also issued guidelines to municipalities for how to manage and regulate temporary outdoor dining. Irma strongly urges municipalities to approve outdoor dining as a temporary use and is permitted by the governor expressly to assist restaurants during COVID-19. It is not intended to be a permanent allowance as the situation of each restaurant is unique, staff will work with business owners through the temporary use permit process to identify the safest manner in which they can accommodate initial outdoor dining if they so desire. I'd like to make a motion to approve an ordinance allowing for temporary outdoor dining.
Good. Can I move on? Second discussion, Trustee Zora.
So, uh, obviously I'm for this because any way we can help the restaurants stay in business, but I did have some questions first, staff. Um, so I know that there ha- there were Illinois Department of Commerce, um, guidelines that were sent out and I'm assuming that, is that what we're going to follow, Julia, or Dean?
Well, I, I think the guidelines are going to be released, some of which have been released by the Illinois Department of Public Health. Um, and some of those came out over the holiday weekend and we have since, uh, sent those, um, guidelines out to all of our restaurants as of today. Uh, we anticipate based upon information that Dean received today, I believe, that there will be additional guidelines that will be released for restaurants in particular. Uh, so not all of the information is out yet, uh, regarding this particular type of use. And so we're not really sure what additional information is forthcoming. Um, this is, um, this particular allowance, uh, provided by the, you know, by the governor in this case, i- it's catch as catch can and the information came out very quickly. We did, it was coming, it came out, I think, on a Wednesday evening. We put this together Thursday, Emily did Thursday morning, um, anticipating, and Irma already has sent out their guidelines. So Irma did put together some very good suggested guidelines. There are some, there are some capacity, um, guidelines provided in the DCEO. There's additional information in the IDPH. Emily's been looking at this more closely. Emily, what did I miss in terms of, um, guidelines that are applicable at this time? Because she's, she's watching it much more closely.
Sure, I think you covered everything. IDPH and DCEO have been working together to develop the guidelines. So when you go to IDPH's website, it redirects you to DCEO to the guidelines. Um, and there's really, right now, two sets. There's the main set of guidelines that they release for all businesses to follow and then there's the restaurant-specific and outdoor dining. So, um, I do think that the, uh, guidelines are likely intended to be enforced in the same way everything else has been enforced, which is at the local level. Um, so it is something that we will have to be monitoring. Um, but as Julia mentioned, we did send those guidelines out to all of the restaurants. Um, and I think many of the businesses have been following these things closely and likely may have had them already. Um, but we have been trying to be very proactive. I know Julia has done some outreach to several of the businesses as well, um, just to answer questions they have or concerns and that outreach, I think, will continue.
So, Emily, when you say that it's going to be enforced at a local level, I mean, have the village talked about how they're going to do this? Is it going to be complaint-based or, or surprise visits? I mean, how, how can we enforce this?
Um, I think that's something that we will, um, have to continue to, to talk through. Um, certainly Chief Contoys can jump in. I mean, these are regulations that were just released, uh, Sunday afternoon. Um, so I'm not sure everyone has had a chance to read through them. I've been through them all, but that's kind of my role right now is to look through all that stuff. I don't know that everyone else has had a chance to. Um, I think, uh, I'll answer quickly and I'll let the chief jump in if he'd like. But, um, the way we've been handling a lot of these regulations as it, as they've been coming down the last couple of months is kind of a dual approach. Um, the one end, trying to be proactive, you know, going out to businesses, giving them signage to post. Uh, I know PD personally talked to a number of, of businesses when they went out to post the signage, to explain the regulations to them and answer questions. And then, of course, there have been some complaint-based, there's been some complaint-based enforcement or follow-up as well. Um, I don't think PD's written any type of tickets or anything, it's more education. Um, but, uh, ideally we're proactive, but certainly we've got to follow up with complaints. Um, and Chief, if you have anything you want to add to that?
No, just to kind of mimic what you stated, uh, you know, the complaints that we are receiving, uh, you know, we're going out and educating people, um, you know, that's the most important thing. We're not in the, uh, um, you know, we don't make it a, a point to go out and write citations, uh, and as far as any businesses that, that, um, over and over again violate that order, they would be, um, you know, uh, then information would be sent out to the state so that they could, uh, you know, maybe revoke their, their license to the state. So, uh, other than that, uh, all the businesses have complied. Everyone that we've come into contact with regarding the violation or, or, I'm not following through with the order has complied with when we have had contact with them.
Thanks. I, I was, uh, Trustee Zora, I was going to add one additional, um, item that I think might be helpful. The intent of the special use permit process or the, uh, temporary use permit process is, is that while we have a TUP or a temporary use process application in pla-, you know, we have that document now, you've seen that document, that form before. Uh, if this gets approved by the village board, staff will take what regulations or advisements are out there now and integrate it into the application process so, so that those provisions are met, um, through the review of the application itself. So, uh, late last week, Emily put together a draft, uh, temporary use permit application that considers a number of the elements that Irma had. Uh, we will continue to look at that application process with regard to any regulations or provisions that are put in place by the IDPH. So the intent is to provide that education early on as the application gets approved and then provide education as necessary. So we kind of want to make sure that they have the information that they need and going and, and so that restaurant owners or restaurant managers are going into this with their eyes wide open. They have that information available. So with that temporary use permit, is that going to be required by the four businesses that already have outdoor seating? No, okay. So, so I, this is my other question. So if they currently have outdoor seating and they possibly wanted to be in the front of the building or on the sidewalk because Rosati's and Eno's don't have space there, they would be the ones requiring the temporary use permit?
Uh, so just to, just to clarify, sorry, I'll let Julia jump in too. But, um, the, for the, the restaurants that have existing outdoor dining, if they want to, um, engage within the footprint that they have that's already been approved, then they don't need any additional approval from the village. But if they would like to withstand their outdoor dining so that they can accommodate more people, then they would have to apply for the temporary use permit for the added space that we can evaluate the impact of that. And then certainly for those four restaurants or three right now, um, that don't have any outdoor dining, they absolutely would have to go through that process so we can work with them to identify the best location and, um, safety protocols for that.
Okay, okay. I think those were all my questions, thank you. Um, I am, I'm definitely for this, I think that it's a great idea to help the businesses out so at least they can get patients back in. Uh, and I, I mean, I feel like if you don't want to go to dinner because you, you feel that you're still concerned about the situation, you won't go. If you, if you feel like this is a, a safe situation, you're going to go. So I, I see no reason not to approve it.
Thank you, Trustee Zora. Trustee Seidel.
I'm for this as well, um, it makes sense to help the businesses in any way we can, so I'm in complete support.
Trustee Lotner.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, in general, I'm supportive as well. A que- question that I have is, um, does, does this temporary use permit ever expire?
Uh, yes. So right, right now it's set to expire at the end of the calendar year. Um, again, it might not be practical for outdoor dining to be continuing in November and December. Um, but just to mirror some of the other, um, legislation and regulations that have come out that continue through December thirty first, um, that is what we have, we have established is the deadline for the expiration.
Okay, thank you, I support it.
Trustee Metic.
I also support it. I, I do have one question in, for instance, in the case of a Rosati's. They're not even set up for indoor dining anyways. I don't see the way you could even give a special use permit because all you've got is that little sidewalk. Um, but, but overall, where it's practical, I definitely support that we need to get the help to our businesses.
And just, I just want to respond to that, Scott. Um, in the case of Eno's and Rosati's, if they were to come to you and say, I'd like to get a temporary use permit to put some tables in the parking lot, the landlord's going to have to sign off on that and it would likely require a lease amendment. So, I mean, you can give people permission if we choose to, to use the public sidewalks and public roadways, I don't know that you want to, but you could. But we don't have any jurisdiction over their parking lot.
Good, thank, thank you.
Trustee. Uh, Trustee Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would also support that it's good for our businesses and step closer to getting back to the new normal.
Trustee Casera.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, I am in, uh, complete conformance with, uh, all of my fellow trustees. Uh, the only thing I would like to add is, um, in addition to support of our businesses, uh, we want our residents to be able to go out and enjoy an, an evening. And, uh, if you ever talk about a win-win situation and we talk about the safety of our, uh, village and business development, uh, Chief Contoys, I'm sure that, um, anything that needs to be done will be enforced by your group. We're not a, uh, a village vanity group that's, that's not going to follow the laws. Um, so I think we have a win-win-win situation and, uh, I would fore to be in and have a, have a cocktail with my wife as well as other residents and a meal. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. It's okay, and, and, you know, let's, we, the answer with this, the businesses are going to have a tough, tough goal in this because, um, all the regulations, I mean, I talked to Jason the other day and, you know, getting to the bathroom, wash stations, uh, passing each other in the hallway, um, throwaway menus, you know, all these things that they're looking at, they're going to have to do. And, uh, so if we can support them, I, well, I do know that the tables are probably going to be at a premium because there's only a few that they have to put out there. So, you know, dealing with reservations and he told me there's going to be a two-hour limit, so moving people along, so, uh, you know, we need to support them and I want us all to, to, you know, go there and have dinner, um, and just appreciate what they're going to have to go through to be able to serve us, so.
Yeah.
With that, um, Megan Call the Row.
Trustee Metic. Trustee Metic. Trustee Sheehan. Trustee Casera. Trustee Lotner.
Yes.
Trustee Zora.
Yes.
Trustee Seidel.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan, and thank you, Trustee Zora.
Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have.
Okay, Engineering Capital Projects, Trustee Casera.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, I hope everyone can hear me. Uh, I have three items to report on this evening. First item, the Thirty-First Street Watermain Project was flat prepared on April thirtieth. The village board wrote to the public due to the pandemic, but contractors and interested persons were able to view the bid opening by a live video conference. Staff is in the process of reviewing the bid documents to make sure that there were not any mathematical errors or missing documents. A recommendation for award of contact will be made in May. Work is expected to commence in June and be complete before the end of the construction season. Second item, Mr. President, Sewer Tech LLC has completed work on the twenty-twenty sewer cleaning and televising project. Approximately sixteen thousand feet of sewers and various sizes were cleaned and televised. Sewer Tech has provided videos and data logs of all of the sewers inspected. This information will be reviewed to determine if any sections of the sewers need point repairs or are good candidates for future lining. Final item, Mr. President. In- Institute Form Technologies has completed another twenty-twenty sewer lining project. They have provided post-construction videos of the sewers to confirm the condition of the pipe after lining process and confirm that all the sewer connections were reestablished by cutting a hill, cutting a hole in the new liner. The sewer lining process allows the pipe to be rehabilitated without the need to replace the sewer by open cutting, trenching, which saves time and convenience of traditional document. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Trustee Casera. Public Safety. Public Safety, Trustee Lauder?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh this evening from the Public Safety Area, first of all, April report from the Police Department. Total number of crimes this year are slightly lower than last year at this time with ninety-one reported this year compared to ninety-seven last year. Traffic enforcement is at one thousand and fifteen total tickets issued through April of twenty twenty. Overall, police activity is slightly lower to last year with two thousand five hundred and eighteen total incidents reported through April of twenty twenty compared to two thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven total incidents through April of twenty nineteen. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and for the safety of everyone, response procedures were temporarily modified and officers took phone reports for delayed and non-emergency incidents. Congratulations are in order to our officer Nick Spurgish, who by unanimous vote was selected as the twenty nineteen La Grange Park Police Officer of the Year. Please congratulate Nick when you see him. Please follow us on our social media accounts as we frequently use these platforms to update the community on response procedures while the COVID nineteen situation remains active and fluid as well as Police Department activities and their status. Our Twitter account is at La Grange Park PD, our Facebook account is at La Grange Police Department, and Instagram is at La Grange Park PD. And as always, a friendly reminder to our residents about securing one's personal property at all times. Please lock your vehicles and your residences, especially during overnight hours. If you are going on vacation, please utilize the new online Vacation Watch portal, frontlinepss.com/la Grange Park, or log into the village website and access the portal under the Police Department page. If you do not have internet access, feel free to fill out a Vacation Watch card at the Police Department. Reminder, during this COVID nineteen pandemic, the village hall is closed to foot traffic but an officer can be summoned to bring you a Vacation Watch card by calling, seven zero eight three five two twenty one fifty one. And you can always contact the Police Department if there are any questions. And from the Fire Department for the month of April, requested um the Fire Department, um we had EMS incidents this month of one hundred and twenty-three. There have been four hundred and ninety-nine year-to-date compared to four hundred and seventy-two year-to-date in twenty nineteen. Fire and rescue incidents this month were at twenty-three. There have been one hundred and twenty-five year-to-date compared to one hundred and ninety-seven year-to-date in twenty nineteen. Our personnel dealt with a number of challenges and changes throughout the month related to COVID nineteen, including transporting many patients who were suspect for COVID nineteen and/or actually tested positive. One of our own paramedic firefighters became ill and tested positive and remained off work until he thankfully recovered. Two of our fire investigators were exposed to a firefighter in another community at a fire who ended up with COVID nineteen, but they both remain negative. We participated in many meetings and webinars throughout each week on updates and best practices relating to EMS response, policies, PPE funding, et cetera. Overall, our PPE supplies remain good with the exception of gowns, which were a supply problem throughout the nation. Two of our employees took leave. One, who was a firefighter in a large Northwestern suburb, Fire Department, was required by his full-time to reduce his exposure risk. Another has personal health issues that he's concerned about along with family high-risk concerns. Early in the month, due to canceling in-person training, we held a Fire Department meeting and training session by video conferencing. Forty-two of our personnel participated. Personnel participated in many birthday wish drive-eyes with the Public Works and the Police Department. Our Foreign Fire Tax Board met by video conference during the month and approved the purchase of a new treadmill for the village hall exercise room, which I understand the, the, our, our staff are excited about. Uh the old one apparently suffered a series of mechanical issues and they also approved a funding program for alternative housing for employees affected by COVID nineteen. Candidates remained in the Fire Academy uh to get essential training completed and participated in many live burn sessions. A fire sprinkler pressure test was conducted at the new home on the five-hundred block of North Spring, and we also witnessed the final acceptance testing anxiety's kitchen and, and wood fire suppression system. SCBA flow testing took place this week with SCBAs being inspected and tested and minor repairs made. And three items of, of noteworthy information uh over the course of the month, early in the month, uh two of our fire investigators responded to assist Lyons with a house fire and at mid-month, an engine company, an investigator responded to assist the Grange with a large garage fire. Um and the next day, one of, uh, one fire investigator responded to assist Riverside with a house fire. And that concludes the report from the Public Safety Area this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Lauder. Public Works Committee, Trustee Sheen?
Thank you, Mr. President. Due to COVID nineteen, Public Works continued with a modified work schedule through the month of April to maintain the health of our employees. The remaining eight hundred tons of road salt from this year's contract was delivered to Public Works. A conveyor was rent, rented in order to stockpile the shipment, but completely filled our salt dome. Parkway repairs from various activations over the winter have been restored with topsoil and grass seed. Fallow patching continued throughout town, permanent patching will start in the next month as weather warms. Preplanting was completed at the end of April with a variety of specimen of trees. Various water and sewer work orders were performed along with residential tree concerns and general construction inquiries. One water main break was repaired on our fourteen-inch feeder line located in Brookfield near the intersection of Ann, Elm and Garfield. Water meters were read in section one and fifteen monthly bacterial samples were taken. An annual water leak survey began this month to detect any leaks on water service sites throughout the village. As leak reports are generated, Public Works will make all the necessary repairs. Maintenance that the department's fleet and equipment performed and all trucks have been converted from winter operations back to their normal status. Next, Mr. President, we have the Thirty First Street Water Main Construction. Purpose is to approve an engineering service agreement with Edward Hancock Engineering Company for construction and engineering services for the Thirty First Water Placement Project. This year's budget includes the replacement of Thirty First Street Water Main from Meadowcrest to Barnesdale Road. The village engineer Edward Hancock Engineering will provide professional construction and their services in the amount of ninety-four thousand two hundred dollars. This expenditure is budgeted under Water Distribution Account, zero five four four two two twenty. Staff recommends discussion and motion to approve an agreement between the village and Edward Hancock Engineering at tonight's meeting. Therefore, Mr. President, make a motion to approve and authorize the village president to execute agreements between the staff, between the village of La Grange Park and Edward Hancock Engineering for construction and engineering services in an amount of ninety-four thousand two hundred dollars for the Thirty First Street Water Main Replacement Program.
Second. The motion is not in discussion, Trustee Sheen?
Thank you, Mr. President, I support this, Hancock did a great job, it took bid for the, of the job, it came in way under, uh we always can count on them, I fully support this.
Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President, complete concurment.
Trustee Zora?
I support this, thank you.
Trustee Seidel?
I support this as well.
Trustee Lauder?
I support it.
And Trustee Muthic?
Affirmative, I supported you as well.
Okay, Megan called the roll.
Trustee Muthic?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lauder?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan.
Okay, next we have purpose to, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Hold on, I'm by interruption.
Uh oh, sorry. Okay, uh next is to approve the invoice with Corin Maine for the upkeep of the village's census water meter reading infrastructure. In May of twenty fifteen, the village entered into an agreement with Corin Maine, formerly HD Supply, posted data from the village's water meter system and provide yearly maintenance to the system. Each year, the invoice is submitted and will need village approval since it's over the village manager's authorization. Staff recommends approval at tonight's meeting for the invoice to Corin Maine in the amount of nineteen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Budgeted in the water distribution is nineteen thousand two hundred under three forty-four two two fifty. Therefore, I make a motion, one, to accept the invoice from Corin Maine in the amount of nineteen thousand six hundred and twenty dollars, and two, to authorize the village manager to sign the purchase requisition.
Second. Second. Discussion, Trustee Sheen?
Thank you, Mr. President, uh I support this, this is, you know, part of uh keeping the water infrastructure up to speed. Uh my only question would be on the invoice, uh two thousand dollars for the extended warranty for year one, i- am I reading that correctly? So for the next, for a total of five years, it'll be about two thousand for the extended warranty?
Yes, that's exactly how you're reading it, Trustee Sheen.
Okay, sir, that, that's all I have, Mr. President, thanks, Director Ready.
Thanks, Trustee Sheen. Trustee Muthic?
Uh, I'm, I'm in concurrence, it's an obligation we made, the, the work's being done and uh it's something we need to do.
Trustee Lauder?
Say, uh, just a quick question, um will this be replaced when we're able to eventually poll all the data, which I understand is where we wanted to try to get?
This is, this is going to be uh an ongoing expense every year, um this, we are currently polling the data, it's just how we're getting it from the tower into our system, there, uh that's the part that they're maintaining, they're the ones that are getting all of the reaps in and it comes in a different file format, then it needs to be converted into our uh new financial software, so that's a separate, but this is what we need to be able to, this is part of the agreement, uh what we need to do yearly from here on out. Um it's just the budgeted years passed, but we budgeted it this year, so that's just something that we're going to be having to pass along every year.
Okay, thank you, Rick, um I support it.
Trustee Seidel?
I support it as well.
Trustee Zora?
I support it.
Trustee Casera?
I support it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan called the roll, please.
Trustee Muthic?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Casera?
Yes.
Trustee Lauder?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Seidel?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan.
Next we have the Rebuild Illinois Fast Track Infrastructure Program, informational only tonight. Purpose is to inform the village board that Public Works seeks to grant for roadway improvements utilizing the services of Baxter Wooden Consulting Engineers. The village has an opportunity to capitalize on the DCEO grant established to promote growth in the state's economy. The fast track program includes twenty-five million dollars of new funding for infrastructure projects that are shovel-ready or can begin within ninety days of award notification. This grant has a minimum award amount of five, five hundred thousand dollars and a maximum award of five million dollars. Currently, the village does not have any shovel-ready projects available. Alternatively, a grind and resurface project appears to be the best option for grant approval. In the spring, two individual uh resurfacing projects were submitted for grant. First one Meadowcrest and Woodside from Thirty First Street to Twenty-Ninth and Twenty-Eighth between Forest and Homestead was sent for CDBG grant approval. Number two, Twenty-Sixth Street from Kemmon to Maple was sent in to invest in Cook grant submission. Both the CDBG, CDGB, and investment Cook plans are capable of receiving an excellent qualifying score for the Rebuild Illinois Grant in return providing the village with a positive award outcome. For the application to proceed, a resolution approved by the village board and public hearing are required. The public hearing will be scheduled for June ninth at seven fifteen PM before the work session meeting and the resolution for local funding allocation placed on the evening's agenda. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Sheen. Um any comments from the board?
Uh yes, you are. Uh, thanks, thank you, Mr. President, um just raising the question, is there anything from the recent flooding event that we um experienced and the reference to um one of the French drain for, for lack of a better term, uh that could become shovel-ready, or scoop-ready as well? Um anything along those lines that could be prepared?
Um, Trustee Lauder, this is a very complic- complicated grant to begin with, um when Julia and I listened to the actual presentation, um it was, it's very limited on the, the projects it utilizes for. Um again, this, this all came out before the actual storm event. Um even listening to everything that we went through on that conversation, the only thing that we could come up with that would even remotely qualify for this grant would be a, some sort of a grind and resurface because again, construction has to be done after ninety days of the award, you have to have a bucket in the ground, and to do anything like that, whether a sewer project or anything like that, it's not even, uh you know, that would be a lot longer because of permitting processes and all that. Uh we even thought about maybe even the Thirty First Street Water Main Project, um since that was just going out for bid, but if we start the construction project before this goes out, we wouldn't qualify for that, so we couldn't use that. So the only two viable projects that we felt that could be shovel-ready in a very, very short period of time are simple grind and rebate, uh because they don't take a lot of engineering to really go in depth, and there's no permitting processes because it's all our village-owned streets, so.
Okay, just uh trying to figure out where we might be able to use some of those funds. Uh, thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Trustee Lauder, any other comments from the, any trustees? Okay, thank you, Trustee Sheen?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Finance Committee, Trustee Muthic?
Thank you, Mr. President, we will start with the uh finance report as of April thirtieth. Fiscal year-to-date general fund revenue is at a hundred and two percent of the annual budget, just over ninety-three thousand dollars higher than the prior year. Revenue tax receipts are about sixty-five thousand dollars or one point eight percent higher compared to the prior year. Other local taxes are lower by about a hundred and three thousand dollars or six four point four percent due primarily to lower utility taxes and the timing of cable franchise fee receipts. License revenue is about ninety-two hundred dollars or two point nine percent less than last year. Permit receipts are down twenty-nine point three percent or about a hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars compared to the prior year. Most of the decrease is a result of lower alteration in addition permit fees compared to last year. Intergovernmental receipts are up two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars or about fifteen point five percent compared to last year due to increased state shared revenue receipts. This trend will change dramatically next month as May's income tax is down nearly fifty percent due to the coronavirus crisis. Charges for services are down about fifty-one thousand six hundred dollars or nine point nine percent due in part to lower ambulance fee receipts. Charges for services are down about fifty-one thousand, six hundred dollars or nine point nine percent due in part to lower ambulance fee receipts compared to last year and the transition of alarm monitoring revenue at LTAC. Fine revenue is approximately sixty-nine hundred dollars lower than the prior year. Local tickets revenue is about fourteen thousand dollars higher due to increased fines, however, court revenue is down by nearly twenty thousand dollars. And miscellaneous revenue is about twenty-nine thousand dollars greater than that year, than last year. That concludes the, the report. Oh, wait. Last thing, uh, total general fund expenditures are at ninety-seven percent of the annual budget and about five hundred, fifty-nine thousand dollars or six point five percent greater than last year. The increase includes, includes a three hundred thousand dollar increase in the transfer to capital project funds and a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollar increase in the police pension, pension contribution. That concludes the monthly report and we do have one action item. And that is a cafeteria plan amendment. The purpose is to consider amending the village's Section one twenty-five cafeteria plan document. The village provides health and dental insurance benefits to eligible employees. A portion of the premium cost of these benefits is paid by the employee. The village has an existing cafeteria plan that allows the employee portion of the premium to be paid using pre-tax dollars under the IRS code. BKD has assisted staff with updating the existing cafeteria plan document, including modifying the plan year to coincide with the village's health insurance plan year, which is July first through June thirtieth. In addition, employees will be automatically enrolled in the plan unless they elect not to participate. Staff recommends the village board consider approving the attached resolution approving amendment of village's Section one twenty-five cafeteria plan at this meeting. So I make a motion to approve a resolution amending the village's Section one twenty-five cafeteria plan and authorize the village manager to execute all required documents.
Second? Motion, second? Uh, discussion, trustee Messeck?
Um, I support this. It looks like, uh, it's well researched. I guess, uh, I would ask Julie or Emily if, if you have any, any additional input on it.
I would defer to Larry as he put together this whole agenda item. Larry, is there anything that wasn't specifically outlined in, um, your cover memo? I know that this was something that you wanted to get aligned with the village's practices for a couple of years and, uh, we were able to get that accomplished. So, is anything additionally?
No, I think we, it was well, well-covered there. Um, it's really something that's more of a housekeeping item, it's just going to make things more efficient for, uh, payroll and for, um, for our reporting purposes.
Then, so that said, I, I support it. It's, it's pretty cut and dry.
Thank you, trustee Messeck. Trustee Sheen?
I support it, sir.
Trustee Cussera?
I support it, Mr. President.
Trustee Zora?
I support it.
Trustee Sadeal?
I support it.
And trustee Lawner?
I support it.
Uh, Megan, call the roll.
Trustee Messeck?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Cussera?
Yes.
Trustee Lawner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
Trustee Sadeal?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
That concludes finance.
Thank you, Megan. Thank you, trustee Messeck. Okay, moving on to other reports. Village clerk, Megan?
Um, I have no reports tonight, Mr. President.
Village treasurer?
Uh, just one report tonight, Mr. President. Uh, there, you'll see in your packet, there's a, uh, item, it's, this is a statutory requirement, uh, that treasurer has to make to the village board and the, the pension board each year on what the, uh, monies have been paid out, what money the fund has. If you take a quick look at that, I'll just give you a brief recap. There's, uh, fourteen point seven five million in assets in the fund as of April thirty. You'll notice that this was a decrease of about seven hundred and one thousand dollars since last year. Obviously, the market took a hit, uh, with the coronavirus cr- crisis. Uh, you can see that the village contributed one point two million as was recommended by the actuary this year. Employees contributed about a hundred and ninety thousand. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, investments did drop, uh, about eight hundred and forty-one thousand because of the, uh, recent market downturn. And, uh, the board will see more of this, uh, further discussion later to come, uh, when the actuary report is completed, uh, later this summer. And that concludes my, uh, report tonight.
Thank you, Larry. Any comments from the board? Trustee Lawner?
Uh, Larry, um, thank you for the explanation. I, I did hone in on the seven hundred thousand dollar reduction, which I figured that that's what was going on. That was a point in time at the end of April, I assume, right?
Correct, so that report is as of, uh, the end of the year, April thirty. Um, there has been some, uh, comeback in the market. In fact, it had gone down, uh, probably much more than that in March when the market took the thirty percent drop or so, but it did recover.
But the other question that I did add is, uh, the fifty thousand dollars roughly administrative fee, from what you've seen, is that fairly competitive in the preseason?
So, that's a, that's a lot to compare when you're talking about that, uh, fee. Uh, being a small village, the pension board has outsourced that to a, uh, a well-known accounting firm. Uh, villages with, uh, bigger staff will often do a lot of that in-house, especially if they have like a, a assistant finance director or accountant, uh, or other, uh, financial staff, they may do it in-house. And some, uh, villages even do all, uh, checks coming out of the village rather than, uh, having them paid by a outsourcing firm. So there's a lot going on with that, with that fee.
I think we've talked about that, uh, in, in, in the past and, uh, seems to be a fairly comprehensive, uh, set of services with that. That's all I had. Thank you.
Trustee Lawner, any other comments from the board? Okay, moving on, commercial, real, utilization, trustee Cussera?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this evening I have two very exciting, uh, pieces to report on. Uh, Christopher Orazadi's Pizza opened their doors on Monday, May eighteenth at seven twenty East Thirty-First Street. They're located in Plaza Thirty-One, which has seen significant renovations over the past year. Orazadi's offers both carryout and delivery and has a full menu of salads, pasta, sandwiches, and more. Call seven oh eight, three four oh, or four hundred, or visit their website at www dot Orazadi's Pizza dot com with Grange Park to try out with Grange Park's newest restaurant. Uh, if I can make a side comment, Mr. President, uh, Karen, have opportunity to, uh, uh, as hope, hopefully everybody will, uh, call them and, and try out some of their food. And, um, I highly recommend that you, uh, give them a call, see what they have, and, uh, see if you enjoy them. Um, notice I know, um, where I work, um, I've got many people that, uh, due to our, uh, shift and DDD, we open up a new restaurant on a Monday. Uh, nobody can, uh, believe that, um, a business opened up a, uh, a restaurant during the Corona nineteen on, uh, May eighteenth. So, uh, please enjoy, try, um, as well as other, um, as well as other neighboring communities as we go to their restaurants. Uh, second item, Murphy's Transmission and Auto Repair has contacted the village about potential expansion of their existing business. Steph is currently working with the business owner to provide guidance on the review and permitting process. Uh, if I can, one more commercial. Um, this is our, uh, investment in Grange Park, uh, as well as homeowners. Um, I am ex- super excited for, uh, uh, this village and everybody in it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, trustee Cussera. Uh, village clerk, I'm sorry, village engineer, Mark?
Little report, Mr. President.
Our village attorney, Kathy? So, motion to approve committee and collectors' report as presented? So move. All in favor?
I.
Okay. I have a couple, just, uh, three items that I'd like to go through. First is the commission appointments. Everybody received the recommendations for appointments and reappointments to various village committees and commissions. I'll just go through them very quickly. Uh, planning and zoning commission, Carolyn Nash, Domogoski, and Christopher Studwell. Uh, reappoint, traffic safety engineering, uh, the whole committee, Steve May, Paul Graham, Matt Huffman, Keith Kreisa, Eric Johnson, Ryan Vokak, and, and Brian Sock. Um, the board of police commissioners, uh, Lavelle Tops, and our newest member, Tim Elboris. Um, police pension board, Mike Sabella, sustainability commission, Kathy Johnson. Um, I'm gonna ask Kathy's on, I know Tim you've already mentioned, would you like to say any additional words?
Oh, again, I'm very, uh, very proud to be helping and supporting our community. I have the utmost respect and, and honor for this community and organization. So I'm just happy to be able to be part of the, the support for the, our community and our, our fellow residents.
Thank you, Tim, and we're very grateful for your acceptance. Thank you. Is Kathy on the line? Kathy Johnson? Okay, Kathy sent me a, a letter, a memo that I'd like to read to the board. To the village board of trustees, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank you for considering my appointment in sustainability commission in La Grange Park. Since moving to La Grange Park fifteen years ago and modifying my own work schedule over the past five to seven years due to personal obligations, I have made a more focused effort on participating in causes that are important to me, which include environmental justice and sustainability initiatives. Being able to contribute locally through civic engagement is a role I will promise to give my maximum efforts to. And I'm looking forward to helping support sustainability efforts across the community. I have been a member of the Sierra Club for years. Okay. Okay, I am sorry. I have been a member of the Sierra Club for years and while perhaps that doesn't really mean a whole lot, it was through networking with members and participating in events that I came to appreciate more and more the challenges we face in many areas. While my main level of interest today are related to local food sourcing and sustainability, our definitions for businesses, my interests have not been related to those two areas. It was through efforts to raise awareness on lead piping in Fisro and Burman that I came to appreciate how important community lead environment and sustainability efforts can be. While those efforts are still being worked on, there has been progress made in some areas that have helped members of those communities. It was gratifying seeing La Grange Park take a much more proactive approach in this area as compared to communities across the area. Currently, I am revisiting sustainability commission's meeting agendas, minutes, and initiatives over the past year to educate myself so that I can start on the ground running. And a side note, the redesigned website has made the effort much easier. I want to thank all of you again and I look forward to working with the commission and with all of you, Kathy Johnson. I send it to Thirty-First Street, so Kathy, thank you also. So those are, uh, the reappointments. If anyone would care, if any, would care to make a motion first?
I make a motion to approve committee and commission appointments and reappointments as follows. Planning and zoning commission, Carolyn Nash, Domogoski, and Christopher Studwell, reappointed to the commission for a five-year term expiring in twenty twenty-five. Traffic safety and engineering, Steve May, chairman, Paul Graham, Mike Huffman, Keith Kreisa, Eric Johnson, Ryan Vokak, and Brian Sock, reappointed to the committee for a two-year term expiring in twenty twenty-two. Police commissioners, Lavelle Tops, reappointed to a three-year term expiring in twenty twenty-three. And Tim Elboris, appoint new to fill a vacancy with a term expiring in twenty twenty-one. Police pension board, Michael Sabella, reappointed to a two-year term expiring in twenty twenty-two. And the sustainability commission, Kathy Johnson, appoint new to fill a vacancy with a term expiring in twenty twenty-two.
I would motion to add a second? Second? Discussion, trustee Messeck? Anyone care to make any comments?
I think we all, we have, uh, a bunch of good, uh, people who've already been serving the community. And as Tim has said tonight, I think we've got two new, good, good members of the community, um, to stay involved and keep us moving on that path. I support them all.
Thank you, trustee Messeck. Trustee Lawner?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just, um, appreciate the commitment of, um, our, our newest members and thank them for their anticipated time and contributions to our village.
Trustee Sadeal?
Um, I concur with what was just said. So I appreciate their commitment to the community.
Trustee Zora?
Um, everyone, including Tim, thank you for volunteering your time and I hope you enjoy it.
Trustee Cussera?
Um, one word, thank you.
Trustee Sheen?
Two words, thank you.
We weren't counting, believe me. Trustee Sheen?
I have nothing, sir. Thank you.
Hey, Megan, call the roll?
Trustee Messeck?
Yes.
Trustee Sheen?
Yes.
Trustee Cussera?
Uh, yes.
Trustee Lawner?
Yes.
Trustee Zora?
Yes.
And trustee Sadeal? Yes. The motion passes unanimously, Mr. President.
Thank you, Megan. I want to congratulate Tim, thank you for, for your time and Kathy Johnson, if you're on, we look forward to working with both of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is the, uh, I'm gonna flip it a little bit. We're gonna do the proclamation next because, uh, we're gonna end with the emergency of emergency. Uh, proclamation, National Emergency Medical Services Week. Um, emergency medical services is a vital public service. The access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience illness or injury. Whereas the village of La Grange Park provides a community-based EMS system comprised of well-established local care stations and medic, emergency medical technicians, firefighters, and police officers. Whereas the village of La Grange Park EMS are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And for many, an EMS, a sense of responsibility to care for the community does not end when the shift does. EMS means more than dedication to duty and lifesaving patient care. EMS is also community care that takes time, energy, and heart far beyond the scope of one's everyday calling. Now therefore be proclaimed in May seventeenth to the twenty-third, be recognized as National Emergency Medical Services Week. Uh, members of the La Grange Park village board honor our EMS professionals on the front line of the COVID-nineteen crisis that admire their willingness to plan, adapt, and respond every day to take care of our citizens and recognize the caring and lifesaving work that the honorable men and women of our emergency medical services provide daily to our villages, to our village. Uh, therefore be proclaimed May twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty. Um, suffice to say, I mean, we all are very, very grateful for the work that our EMS and all EMSs across the region, uh, give to us. Um, the, the occupation that at this point in time is, uh, very, very harrowing and we, we appreciate all of those that are out there helping us and helping our residents stay well. The next item is the local state of emergency review. Uh, purpose to review the state, the village's local state of emergency. General background, on April twenty-second, two thousand twenty, uh, there was issued a declaration of local state of emergency in light of the impact of COVID-nineteen on the village of La Grange Park, its residents, businesses, and property owners. The declaration allows the president to utilize executive orders to exercise the power and authority of the corporate authorities as may be reasonably necessary to respond to the emergency. Any state of emergency declared pursuant to Section thirty-seven point twenty-one point one of the La Grange Park municipal code expires no later than the adjournment of the first regular meeting of the corporate authorities that the state of emergency has been declared and in accordance with state law. At the April twenty-eighth village board meeting, the village board approved ordinance number eleven twenty-eight extending this local state of emergency. The ordinance remains in effect without further action until it is withdrawn either by a written declaration issued by the village president or by the passage of an ordinance by an affirmative majority vote of the corporate authorities. Due to the uncertainties of the ongoing COVID-nineteen crisis, the village board agreed to place new ordinance on the board meeting agenda for status, review, and discussion. Earlier this month, the governor released Restory Illinois, a public health plan to guide the reopening of the state's economy. Phase one rapid spread is defined by the rate of infection among those tested and the number of patients admitted to the hospital is rapidly increasing. It was phase one where the stay-at-home order was issued. Currently, we, currently we are- Currently, we, currently we are in phase two, flattening where the rate of infection and the number of patients admitted to the hospital slows, moving toward a flat or downhill trend. Phase two allows non-essential retail stores to open for curbside pickup while residents are required to wear face covering outside the home. Recently, the governor announced plans for phase three of recovery where certain public health metrics, rate of infection are in decline and many businesses can reopen to the public with precautions. It is anticipated that all areas of the state will enter phase three by May twenty-ninth. Phase four revitalization requires continued decline of infection, hospitalizations, gatherings of up to fifty people are allowed, restaurants and bars reopen, travel resumes, children's and schools reopen under guidance from the IDPH. And then phase five restored requires the presence of a vaccine or high effective treatment widely available for the elimination of any new cases over a period of time. With phase, phase five, all businesses, schools, and places of recreation can open with new safety guidelines and procedures. In the interest of protecting the public health and safety of residents as we transition to phase three of the Restore Illinois Plan, um, I recommend that the village retain the local state of emergency and review again at the June twenty-third village board meeting. Additionally, the national emergency declarations, state and county disaster declarations concerning the COVID-nineteen outbreak are still in effect. So if someone would care to leave the motion?
Mr. President, no motion is necessary. It's important.
Okay, I'll open it up then to the board. Um, let's start with trustee Metzick.
I mean, we, we had a lot of discussion, uh, before I'm, I'm okay with, with monitoring it and, and moving forward. I do have, um, well, I know we act responsibly in this village. I have, I have a little trouble with the, uh, with the governor at times because I think it's overreaching, but, uh, we do still need to adhere to the state of emergency, but we, we need to monitor it very closely.
Trustee Launer?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Um, yeah, we, we did have a lot of discussion about it and, uh, I think everyone felt comfortable with, uh, putting it in place with the, um, agreement that we would review it every month and I, and I'm comfortable going one more month and, uh, reviewing it at the next, uh, board meeting and getting, again, I think we do have, um, we all do feel a very responsible staff and, and, uh, board, fortunately, but, uh, taking this a step at a time, I think, is, is very important. So with the, um, understanding that we'll review it at the June twenty-third village board meeting again for consideration and then perhaps we can go back to quote-unquote "normal operations" for our organization. Right. It, it in place.
Trustee Sidal?
Well, trustee, I believe that safety should come first, so I like how we are reviewing it, uh, month to month, but, um, I'm also for extending it for another month.
Trustee Zora?
I think we definitely need to extend it another month.
Nothing has flattened out and we're, I feel like we're being responsible, so I'm fine with this.
Real pros.
Did you hear me?
Is it just my computer that's freezing up or is anybody else's?
Mine just did for a second.
Okay, uh... Trustee Casera?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I think we kind of talked a little bit about this and I made some comments regarding the, uh, restaurant, uh, piece. Um, but we need, it, it's a lot like the, the marijuana. Uh, we need to find out what this looked like and, uh, to take it piece by piece, I think is fine. Uh, at the same time, I agree wholeheartedly with trustee, uh, Metzick, but, um, I think Chicago, Cook County is different than, okay, my town was in Champaign-Urbana. Uh, so, uh, and I have complete, uh, confidence and, uh, chief control than, uh, making sure that, uh, we can make this thing work the way it's supposed to be and enforce it. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, I'm, I'm not, I'm not getting anybody.
Uh, I've got you back, man.
I can hear you, Jim.
Are we in? Yeah. Okay, you're, you're off, you're finished. I'm getting, cutting it out here, so I'm, I'm getting pieces of you, Jim. What are you doing?
Okay, um, no, basically, um, I'm just saying that, uh, I agree with it. Um, we need to take it slow. Uh, we need to get answers, but at the same time, I, uh, definitely agree with trustee Metzick and, uh, as we're going through this and making sure everybody's safe, we need to make sure we're reopening the country. And our village.
Thank you, trustee Sheehan. Trustee Sheehan?
Yes, Mr. President, I agree with my, uh, fellow trustees.
Wait, okay, Julie, that gives you direction or? Yes?
Yes.
I don't know if I'm on.
I can, I can hear loud and clear. Except now.
Kathy, you're, you're still on. Okay. Is there any other public participation, anyone else on the? Okay, not hearing any. Any new business? Okay, motion to adjourn.
So. Okay.
Okay, bye, everyone.
Bye.
Good night and wonderful day.
All those in favor?
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you and have a great week.
Good night. Thank you.